This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
There is a bomb. Everyone, please join me in the legislative meetings. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose stand is one nation, united in the middle of the diversity and justice world. Welcome everyone and happy new year. Our first order of business will be to elect a chair and vice chair. We will elect a chair. All right. Second, all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Vice chair. I'm making a motion for a vice chair. Okay, I did not sign that back. The motion is second, all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next item of business, approve the agenda that has already changed. The one I would go with that at eight thirty on your spiritual class. I think that's our three class consideration. She didn't nail it right here. Uh, I'm not sure exactly. I just, I just don't know that I thought they would be on the agenda. So I'm not sure. They should cut them under the guise of yes. Okay. General rotation. Second, okay, the motion is second to approve the agenda with a rotation. Further discussion. Seeing that all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Do we have any conflicts today? No. Saying that. Next order is, uh, is this bill to adopt Robert's rules of order and special rule of order. Require amount of three members approval to pass a motion. That's a simple motion about that. So we'll do that. Motion in the second. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Now we can approve the minutes for December twenty eighth, twenty third. Okay, the motion is second for approval of that minutes. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. I need the bills out. We have just five minutes. Do you have any questions on the bills? I'm over eight seconds. Okay, the motion is second for approval of the bills. Further discussion. Seeing that all who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Very. Now, this brand will travel fast. Personnel are approved on this first time of work as a higher classification.
Oh, I got the personnel. Are they, um, at the request of the Department of Legislature, uh, the app that I have this approval begin with the chair. To accept the twenty twenty four Simon work at a higher class. Then if you would like, I can leave the subject. This discretion and employee may be assigned a work of a higher class employee in the absence of a higher classified employee. And be entitled to the base pay of a higher classification each or annually. Rotation is such an increase on the employees' salary. So you don't have a whole lot of that in form of the Highway Department. Did they rearrange it to have their assistance? Form, so yeah, it doesn't happen very often.
Okay, wish you sleep. I suggest that, um, you know, the supervisor of the area. I think that was possible there. That's what somebody did. Generally. So, uh, I was on the highway. I think last year, I know it's. It's the, uh, these are.
It's just been our personnel manual, so, um, this has asked us, we didn't manage what they can use here according to, um, our state office.
So this is the next time to practice for a while.
Yes, and.
Like we can discuss it better. Don't do a little bit.
We want to change, yeah, a little bit. You have to change the personnel.
Okay, we need a motion to this. But if we're moving to the second for approval, all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty four, the first one, collective officials conversation. This is the, um, annual assessing paper. Election officials, superintendents, such as fifteen judges at one ninety. If they attend a election school, twenty dollars. And if I require extra help, and then also have added the post-election audit. That needs to be held fifteen days after every election now. They set at sixteen fifteen per hour.
The motion for approval is second. Okay, the motion is second for approval. Discussions. So we try to change last year.
Race fees from two hundred to two fifteen to one seventy five.
All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Okay, next order of business is the resolution twenty twenty four dash two designation of polling places and precincts. And our list is the ones that we've been commonly used for years, correct? Time changes. I moved it up. Resolution part, my special. Sorry. Two. The motion is second to adopt the polling places. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Designation of the positsories, that's twenty twenty four dash three.
Okay, I guess we try to treasure and check with her to make sure that these are all still the positors that we use or what you use in the future. And she recommends that we pass resolution forty twenty four three S to them.
Can you just say we need a red or anything? A little approval. Okay, the motion is second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Very. Twenty twenty four dash four planings are being scheduled.
And which is where you ask this presented the fee plan. Also entered. We'll just hear if you have any questions. Please update it. I know there was a couple of them. I can give you what's up here. I read a few ones. Yeah. So we added in that non-alcoholic beverage and food stamp. And we just proved that two months ago, I think it was, we were adding it to the fee schedule. Um, and then. I wanted to talk to you about a reexamination fee. I don't know how this works, but. There's been so much time on class. Um, and so a couple of agencies that I've seen are charging surveyors more fifty or. I mean, some of the stuff that we're sending back to them is selling yours. It's may not having the right ownership because they're not going to the police office and actually doing their deep research. Um, it's just really stupid mistakes that we shouldn't be. And it's just, it's amazing to me. So this is what some agencies are doing. They're just saying that it will do it once. Anytime after that, they're starting to charge additionally. I don't know. It's just a thought that you're like, this should be what's going on clear background.
It felt like on occasion you were basically the surveyor secretary correcting all the mistakes. But they should have done it now. And so it's, I think it's something that the private agency should look at and have a discussion on. Yeah. I'm not opposed to something like that.
I don't know. I don't know what else I can do. You don't make them. I don't know what else to do. Because I mean, most of the stuff we're dealing with, yeah, there's some stuff we're spending so much time on the clerical stuff. That we're maybe not getting time to work on that. She gets something, you know what I mean? So I've gotten really strict with them. Um, basically I've given her permission to, if she starts repeating it. And let's say she comes up with very light clerical, just send it back. We're just going to move the agenda. I don't know how else. I mean, I, you guys have heard me get frustrated for over a year now. So this is just a thought, maybe it'll catch their attention. That's going to cost me another two bucks if I don't start doing what I need to do. So I guess this, the fee schedule that we adopted, then I can start targeting.
Do we have a policy about how we review those and how we apply that as a commission to copy the policy?
Yes. That was, we put in that.
So many errors, right?
Yeah, so many errors. And then we're just kicking it back. And there's still so many that are turning out in favor.
I think you already approved the policy. So I was like, you're just going to now implement an actual fee for that. Is that right? So I think the past we've been doing, even the policy has allowed you to send the class back. We're going to, I'm going to say, I'm only, we're going to send it back. We're going to charge for it. That's what I.
So that's you got that. Yeah, I, I got it added into this one if you guys are okay.
It's a lot of work to have.
Um, very odd. I don't know. It's kind of the last, yeah, but it's the end of the nation. So your first fees are in there. So those fees aren't going to change. You still have your initial fees. But if we have to continue to reexamine, we're just going to start targeting. I should do that. I feel your attention. Yeah. We basically, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it's a bit more than twice. So a barrier for, um, a little bit later.
Well, yeah, we renewed it three times. We did ours a lot of years.
The motion. After that, we're just.
I think you can use that as a schedule.
Yeah. Yeah. Take a motion. But like, if you did that with a motion in a second, sort of the fee schedule for a majority. It's just a discussion. You know, have you, uh, have you had a cost on or some different thing on here already?
Only fees I changed are just what I just pulled you. Other than that, everything else is same, the same as what we looked at last years. Yeah.
Well, everything's higher. I just thought maybe, uh, well, sorry.
Well, we did a pretty big increase. She has one year, last year and the year before I went through. I doubled the price of every application. So I don't usually do that more than a lot every five years, every day. So to you guys who can, if you want to increase your part of it. I mean, some, I'm not going to lie, we're, we're low, but not comparative to like what Pennsyl County charges. The county, we're, we're right in that. With what the other local shersters, because we're all the only one we're not is building companies. We're, we're low on resources. What you're discussing.
Uh, was this exchange?
Yes, this is. So this is the one if you remember, um, it was when we started, in addition to, uh, non-alcoholic beverage ordinance, we found a provision that we can't actually charge for ordinance changes. Um, because there are a. They're supposed to be, we can't charge an app for it. Because no matter what, it has to come through us with surgery. It's, it are changes, whether you like it or not, so they can still come to me. And a lot of the cases, we can actually start from the, it was a statute that was, I don't know. So we have that. We can't charge.
Is everyone comfortable with what we have in front of us? We have a motion in the second. And so everyone who favors the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right. Resolution twenty twenty four dash five inmate incarceration fees scheduled to remain the same chair this year. For the chair. Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, the motion is second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty four dash six in, in general, federal rates. Chairman, if I may, there are some significant changes proposed for this year. Looking at what you currently have as place scheme, you have a sort of a five-tier burial and assistance program. It's probably one of the most complicated. I don't know. Um, maybe generous is a good word for that. I'm aware of the state. We're talking to David Iceberg at the F R O M Spiritish. He proposed, and I, and I agree to recommend that we change policy significantly. And go to five different rates to two different rates. So one for cremation and then one for a full funeral. And so that was also a great. I don't know if it's a big, uh, an increase in the fees. So last time the fees were, it was back in two thousand sixteen. So that, that's proposed the amount for a cremation, which is about ninety-five percent of the energy barrels. Will go from one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to two thousand dollars. And then the actual, sort of the standard funeral fee would go from two thousand two hundred and ten dollars to three thousand dollars. And those haven't been raised since two thousand sixteen. I do have a list of energy barrels by county of what they, uh, what they charge and what they authorize, I should say. And I think those figures aren't lying that what our counties are doing. And so I recommend it, but, uh, I'm going to weigh it up. Policy is. Second. Okay, the motion is second. Uh, discussion. Make sure that, so I'm wondering why we are offering a funeral versus cremation. Yeah, I think that the one statute, uh, I agreed it, uh, compels us to, uh, to, uh, offer any sort of a regular funeral. Just don't look at it here. It was, yeah. Let's see. So I think it's, uh, twenty eighteen seventeen for the funeral director in charge shall furnish a casket and also a container and conduct the funeral services. That suggests to me that we have to offer a funeral. Let's see what kind of a casket it has to be, but, uh, something I think, you know, just that just cremation. Yeah, I'm going to guess you'll be in this legislative issue. Oh, yeah. And that was my answer as well. Okay, if I have any further discussion. Seeing that we have a motion at second is for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution, they're excited, but it has a place in the legal newspaper. Right here. Yeah. Easy twice. Motion is. Okay, the motion is second for approval of. Designating the, uh, by nearest official newspaper. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Very. Okay. Point the board of adjustment. Okay, that motion is second to point the, trying to make sure there's the board of adjustment for twenty twenty four. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Flight building code board. Resolution. It was. Yeah, we've been doing that now for about the last several years. It's late. You have the county committees here. So we never had to use. Before the building code board. Second. Okay, further discussion. Seeing that we have a motion at second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Pretty volunteer firefighter search, you guys can move members.
Can you present that, uh, list of, um, in your package? So just either for long-term purposes, something will happen when you're on a call, but they would be covered under the report.
There's a blackboard pass. Unapproval. Okay, the motion is second for approval. Further discussion. Seeing that all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Twenty twenty four wages and scales and on the everything date.
You were also presented on the, the pay scale for twenty twenty four along with the, um, base pay for all the employees. Um, effective on twelve thirty one of twenty twenty three. That is the start of the, the pay period.
And this is what we approved. And it's like this. The areas that we're going to face to do. Not a discussion, I guess. We approve this.
Yes. Yep. And then.
I was looking at. Okay, the, okay, the motion is second to, I got this. Further discussion. Seeing that all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. So, so for the.
This is for the, um, twenty twenty four. So one also effective on twelve thirty one of twenty twenty three. We also provided a list of all the employees who received this, um, cell phone allowance. This was also wasn't approved during March.
All right. Wish you luck. I have a concern, I'm an individual. We're giving out too many cell phones. I can see the sheriff's department where they work. Um, I think, I know there are a lot of the other people are too far from home. How do you feel about that? We have a policy on, on getting cell phones. That is, I just think. I think it's kind of like. I guess they seem a little less active, maybe just based on your cost of plans. Uh, I think that probably something we look at in July. Is appropriate. Motion to approve cell phone. Second. Okay, the motion is second to approve the cell phone. Phone premium. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Very. Designate share focus positions.
Um, I, um, reached out to the sheriff, he just double checked to make sure that these are all his current positions. And his department confirmed that this is, um, the full-time position for his office for twenty twenty four. So this requires you to establish that at the beginning of the year.
Motion to approve. Sorry, the, the, the motion is second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. That'll be all this board conversation.
She's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this year is also a little bit of a, for the correctional officers and for deputies. Six dollars per day for deputies and one dollar per day for that, that our physical workplace question. Pretty important. Yeah.
Okay. Second, okay, the motion is second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. All right, well, that'll, 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 that's yours. I think I said on that board. Okay, if you're a member of, uh, we're still quiet.
So this year is effective December thirty first of twenty twenty three. The, um, ordinance for sixty dollars per case. That's also is the same amount that is received for fourteen twenty three.
Okay, discussion. Or, uh, the motion. Motion to approve. Okay, the motion is second for approval. Further discussion. Seeing that all those who favor the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Or observe, hold it, you know, less good for you.
And then also, um, what we have done in the past is, um, had a motion to follow the list of holidays in article. Seven of the personnel policy twenty twenty eight oh eight. And then to give the chairman authority to act on the change of any additional holidays appointed by the president of the United States, the governor of the states, of course, state employees. Or the county commissioner of law, county, or public brass administrative league, Thanksgiving holiday, maybe it serves as a holiday. So if something comes up or we could reach out to the chairman and he could authorize it without.
Okay. That. And, well, so we had it happen in the case that where they already stole for the board leadership. We had one, I mean, to sure it wasn't a couple of years ago. It was announced on a Friday afternoon. It was regarding QT, the governor, um, declared that a holiday. And so we had it happen quickly on that one. That was, it's, it's very rare. But it's, it's nice. Yeah. Yeah. We had to present a team for a conversation. Okay. Observe, follow the social job. Sorry. Okay, the motion is second. You know, I'm okay with the, the problems that we have. Um, I, um, saw support for the problem they have. And I can say that would probably be a cool addition. Um, there's something I had that, uh, the past, we approved QT for the last year. And then we also did a day after Christmas. Uh, Christmas is on Wednesday this year, so, uh, yeah, so. It's like that we need to nail those down now and not keep adding them. It, we're just going on the talk. All right. I have correct. Your comments will be submitted in a minute. All those who favor the motion before us will say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. For committee appointments goes back to my last year. Just trying to, I can help that. If you're just on whatever interest from conference, I don't really have a letter in your back. You can come to a fair court. Basis, basis for, I hope he's eligible to get those right district. Uh, I didn't, I think, or, see, we're probably, I think, it was a new square twice. This is where it's not there. All right.
Clarify on that motion. If you're not aware, we may there to give you the authority to act. It's quite, quite emotional to talk about this best method. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That's how I have it a little. Or, so we got to come. I just wanted to make sure I don't have to say about that. I would be calling involving everyone over there for blessings. I, I just wanted to, I struck it out. I just wanted to mention.
All right. And our first item on our list is the engagement, which is not active right now. The second one, natural resource community. It looks like everyone is confirmed. There's no need for that. Everybody okay with that? The motion, the beach, the coach commissioners. Correct. Certainly, we got the area and, and Richard sleep on that. I can continue on. Yeah, I can. The motion to. There it goes. So, so that's. Second. Okay. The motion is second for, for all of those two. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Sure. Does that include all the others as well? Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, wildlife reparations, your reason is not active at this time. These are, I'm not active. We can fire those up as needed through the, you know, we need to. It could, I think it goes back to, it wasn't like about two thousand nineteen, 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 nine, two thousand. There was a sort of sophisticated set of ordinances actually drafted with all these different communities on there. Uh, I think the homework experienced back then, that environment where you were. And, you know, there's a, there's a whole sort of suite of, of different communities. They, they haven't been used, okay, yeah. Okay. And then there's, uh, the server. And from the, yeah, Richard sleep. And myself is an alternate and sure of it. Service expired. Is she still? Yes. And like, how you're. Actually, the good. Commissioner sleep, are you still having interest in, uh? I can't have nobody else. Uh, I think somebody else had a, I go. So. First, we're going to sleep. Primary. Is all the venture project. Sorry, we have a motion to second, all those who bear the motion will say aye. Aye. Close motion, Gary. To. Horse County Housing. Uh, Commissioner Flanagan, uh, here on that board. Yeah, I would stay on, uh, for our last year, Mr. Diver was appointed in this commission meeting. And things. Same. Set to. Make a motion for a sign, trying to find again to. Sorry, that's gonna. Okay, we have a motion to second to. First, Flanagan. All those who bear the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, Gary. In front of committee. Very. Uh, Mr. Jennings, Commissioner Jennings is on there. All right, continue on. All right, we have quite a. Kind of commission. The second, I have a motion to second for a discussion. All those who bear the motion will say aye. All right, close motion, Gary. Basis, basings. Um, we had a meeting here a lot too long ago and Mr. Weber was kind of like, well, uh. Uh, I have a desire to continue. And unless someone else wants to say, can I, I as well, we'll continue on that word. I may, um, hold on, okay. Motion to approve this. Okay, we have a motion to second to. Go, we have before us here, all those who bear the motion will say aye. Aye. Close. Motion, Gary. Then we'll. For your term. You do anything from Jackie, you can see. Okay. That's been. We need to open that. Yeah. So, second. Okay, we have a motion to second to, uh, reappoint Jackie personal. I'd like to prepare a little bit of support, all those who bear the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, Gary. Yeah, I'm having meetings, Bob. I've never had one yet. I've said that there are a lot of. You mentioned those four, historically, um, for many years. I remember there was one hearing, most of your, the listeners, they take care of the Yankton, by the mental support or the rapid city on occasion, mostly Yankton. Yeah, a couple years ago, they're chronically mental person. Was in and out of Yankton, probably, I don't know, twenty, thirty times over his lifetime. And, and so came back and, and we're having periodically to review him, he was getting forced injections. And he is in Yankton now more permanently than not, so the need for that board is not existent typically now. So people are. Yeah. Okay. Well, I didn't deal with that at this time, I got writing in somebody. Uh, Mr. Fuller does. Uh, said he would like to continue on. Uh, I would step down and, uh, let someone else. Uh, sit on that board. Mr. says, are you still interested in being on?
Yes.
Okay. As am I. Okay. And then Richard would remain as the alternate, is that correct? But it was. That's what you want, yeah, historically, you have, you put in one county commissioner on there, commissioner on board. Of all you've had, you've had two county commissioners, you certainly have two, I think it says no, no last, I want to, I lost the bias, that's still supportive then. So what we have before us is, uh, Commissioner Jennings and Commissioner Castillo. And Commissioner Sleep was alternate. Yeah, we get one, Mr. Flores, William Washington, so. Second, we have a motion and a second for a discussion. Seeing that all those who bear the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, Gary. Police defender. We've got, uh, Jack, you can record. We will all confirm that.
Yes.
And I would, uh, you know, the brand of your time. Gary, you're right, I'm. Or not, I can continue. Yeah, motion approved, just here some rest order. Stop doing our Jennings. Okay, second, all those who bear the motion will say aye. Close. Motion, Gary. Right, we're probably notified. Presently, we've got, uh, Brad Flanagan, Richard Dale. Ron Rosenbaum, Kevin LaClaw, Jeremy Holden. And it looks like they've all confirmed this stuff with the commissioners, they want to keep. I'm sure we have a statement. And I will experience it eventually. Okay, yeah. All my way of proposing. For us. Uh, sorry, okay, we have a motion to set up for approval, all those who bear the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, Gary. My horse count. I guess Richard's sleeping, trying to find himself. I hope we have. If anybody else wants.
It was like four board members. Second. Okay, very much in a second. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Bye bye. Motion carried. Do you see more seconds? Me and my sheriff is uh getting their chairman on the sheriff. Do you see more? That's the second. Okay, my motion is second. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. I'm sorry, that's right. But I'm just kind of wondering about the uh cost for it. I've been on there for a while. Costs are pretty high for uh individuals on there using their teenagers. Uh I just wanted to know what it is.
At the top of my head, it's a lot. You're right, though. I got it. Current rate is. I think it's like six hundred six hundred. Six hundred thousand. I think it was nine hundred. Per day. Okay. That was the age of two. And then. And we'll make it fight. Our next floor is the last report. Yeah, Commissioner Jennings is on there. We don't have a lot for now. I straightened out. I mean, I'm sure. What's your word? I'm sure you're clear. James Leatherford. I'll second that. All right. My motion is second. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. State Department of Economic Development currently at Commissioner Flanagan. Commissioner Jennings just yelled at that. And Commissioner Lee, the second alternate. What's your pleasure on this word? If someone else wants on, I can show them stuff down. If not, I would say. I don't know. It's gonna be too long. It's on there. I can step down from one of them. Right, I got it. So. Very cute. Yeah, it's on. I might stay healthy and good. I'm sure you're right. I'm flattered again. Yeah, they're kidding. So we're checking. So we're moving Mr. Sleep. So I don't know. Okay. Was that a second? I thought it was safer. I'll say. Right. My motion is second for approval. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. Motion carried. Lead Department of Economic Development currently that's Commissioner Jennings. And I can continue on that. So there. Probably no, but there it come up for. Second. Okay, my motion is second for approval. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Uh, this is motion carried. Of course, multiple use currently is uh Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Tissell is alternate. Okay. I will take. So my. Right. My motion is second for approval. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. Carry. State Division of Forestry contact person is is at uh. Chairman. Chairman of the Department of Forests. Uh, first of all, the State Division of Forestry second. Okay. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. All right. I'm opposed. Carry. State District Community Action. I am ready. And I am ready. Uh, good for you. She has. He's on a cruise. Uh, motion to approve. Second. Say hi. Really, very opposed in a second. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. Boy of. As far as materials coordinator, that's kind of a given there as well. It's yeah. Where can some projects? I was just curious. Like, if it's official, saying to. I'll tell them to need the efforts. As far as working, I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Uh, I'm opposed. Carry. I like it. Some of the copies. Uh, the last one. And like uh other positions. So they don't cross out the thing. This is for the current back end. Thanks. All right. Our next word about this. Here if you were upset. Morning. I just real quickly at the last meeting. Uh, and request. Can you consider the question? Flat of the city. So it's a start. Throughout this whole committee. Uh, for example. And he was an analyst that the current board members plus prior board members to include Daryl Johnson, Randy Diver. And Randall Rosemash. And also to include the current members of the committee, which includes Sheriff. Audit Director. Right here at the Internet Services and Technology. Timina. Building the ground supervisor myself. And then also Shelley who works for the sheriff. And she's been his manager. I'll be the coordinator. How do you date? I think that sounds good. So our motion after this. I just go. All right. Okay, my motion is second for approval. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. Motion carried. To determine if I have this going this course. I think service. Mr. May. You're in the barrel, sir. Good morning. I don't have much to respond. Thank you guys for all these committees that you're on. Holy cow, that's a bunch of stuff. Takes up a lot of your time. Yeah, I will thank us. So we're right. Still a lot of time. Yeah. Thank you. You guys are here. Thank you. Um, the only thing I really have is I did told you about the last getting. I'd reach out to the Rose Engineering on the verge of Christian's Drive. And because of the holiday, I did not hear back from them until this morning. And their recommendations to force that. That's why we are in a life thing. We are in the process of. So we need to do anything for Carol. I don't believe so. I think this is in the hands of the engineering. It goes to the state. The state won't even know about it until they they get the next report. We need now. Here or there. It's gonna be moved now. It's in the plan. The the uh Rose is currently doing the design work on it now. We have the grant. We're doing the design. We're gonna do our best to get it moved up so we can. You know, hopefully get some work done on it. At least get the bit authorization. We'll be letting twenty-four. Is that all? Okay. Commissioner Flanagan, can we talk with the city of Sturridge? And maybe put something out on the service road there. Or Christians and starts. Or finally get through. We're signing it. And also today, we're putting signs up. We're gonna put signs up at the intersection of Colorado. We're gonna put signs up at the intersection of Christians and Drapemake in Colorado. And we're also gonna put periodic signs on each road. With that a state bridge ahead and then give the land. So we're we're gonna put plenty of signing up. We are trying to secure some better barricades. So we have something. It can't be. We're gonna be working on that throughout the day. So. Anyway, that's where we are. Plus, the project's gonna be a box cover. That one is gonna be a box cover. Go away else. Yep. That's it. That was a plan. And I believe there's some plaster. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we're asking here from the city as well as we are sending. Uh, it's city as we are sending. Yes, sure. Oh, thank God. Whether today. Three, that's just any problem. It's not. Are you both? And that's the main problem. Listen in. So we have to. The first few words.
Yeah. Yeah. Did everybody get copies?
Yeah.
What's the past? Um. That's nice. So. All right. Let's start with central mountain. If that works for you guys. So this is just the central lot line revision. Coming to personal uh both are developed in single family homes. Um. This plot of justice is a summary between the two lots. Uh, the better policy of the property area. Properties are those first four district. Both proposed lots, you know, zoning district requirements. Uh, both on there. And so uh subject to some technique. All dear or you know, upwards. Those attacks. Um, both companies are accessed on the Brooklyn Bridge Road. Um. And yeah, that's unapproved.
In question. I'm gonna be more looking. What you're looking for is motion to authorize highway superintendent or somebody. I got the county side highway forty.
Yeah. And I looked at the road district graphic as it's the one that's registered out there. So I'm checking.
But I was. What was your? What's your? Does that entire area follow? It's all the industry three mile.
Yeah.
You guys have my whole place in three mile now. Okay. I don't really. We don't. We don't wanna be in a. Okay. It's kind of a rough stretch. Okay. I don't think there's really need to do here. Uh, motion to authorize highway superintendent or somebody outside the highway forty five. So. Okay, my motion is second for discussion. Commissioner Lee, you're using that uh character six. Sorry about that. So you got having. Control. I'm sorry about. And then uh. I can't read the word now. It isn't uh put down as a. adjacent to the city. It's just uh three miles.
Yeah. So it's uh it's located within that boundary of the lot line intersection. So.
So are you uh? Giving us same recommendations of those and said that.
Uh, we have to make sure that all of your guys has minimum zoning criteria. And then any. Have to follow the three mile ordinance.
This meets the zoning because it is part of us.
Yeah.
Mr. Jennings.
So the number of locations. It's just. Check them exist on the line.
They mentioned that that the goal of this two.
I believe it's.
No, I didn't jump. And the way.
That right.
We totally haven't handled it. That's it. I don't know. Well, they are not paying their earnings. So they do have a lot of obligations. They're on the homeowners association. It's good. But that's.
Yeah, it's not a registered. So we they're not registered. Generally.
It's either one is a current homeowners association. It's not the county. But then they have to get on the county road. I think to to transit, right? So that's the where we get the county roads.
Yeah.
Please. Yeah, we have a motion. Uh, okay, motion is second for discussion. All right. I'll also go for the motion for us. We'll say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. Motion carried. All right.
All right, next one. Guys. Uh, another lot line adjustment flat located at the intersection of Upper Valley Road and Old Highway fourteen. Um. So as you can see, that existing uh east west lot line located towards the southern portion of the property. Um, there's an existing garage that is uh across the property boundary. So this flat will bring both lots uh closer to compliance with minimum lot size requirements for the uh highway service commercial district. And it will bring that building into compliance with set up requirements. So happy to answer any questions. For those who are seeking items to.
Not have the line through the garage. I think motion to approve. Okay. Okay, my motion is second for approval. I'll also pay for the motion. Say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. Motion to the chair. And so that uh highway superintendent is authorized to sign that as well. Yeah, I'd already made the comment to her that I. I would only be in favor of that as long as the approach is stable. There'd be no additional approach to that. It'd not be difficult to put another one in there. So yeah, somebody will try. Yeah.
And then we do have a stipulation that staff report that. Right. Building permit. Uh, a development plan should be approved by the board. I'm sure he does have intentions of adding some additional storage units on that road. But that will come back for you guys with the building permit. It should just go forward if I ask.
Yeah.
All right. All right. This one is for the final flat of lot one two of Daley's subdivision. Um, so this is a minor plot located outside of city limits within the three mile body jurisdiction. It's just um west of the intersection of uh highway eighty-five and Colorado.
All the trees along the road is.
Yeah. Yeah. And the rest of the road where all the trees are. Um, so the entirety of the property is currently zoned general A for district eight one. Um, this subdivision would create two lots consisting one of forty-eight acres, the other thirty-seven point thirty-one acres to be known as lot one and lot two of Daley's subdivision. Um, I think the primary thing to highlight here is uh that this is comments that we received from planning staff that. Um, generally district requires a forty acre minimum lot size. Uh, so proposed lot two does not meet the minimum lot size requirement set forth under the eighteen one seventy regulations. However, the applicant doesn't intend to pursue annexation due to zoning of lot two. Um, yes.
Yes, good. You guys are gonna ask for that.
Yeah. Yeah. So um anyways, as presented, this platform requirement needed approval by county commission in tandem with this submitted annexation request. Um, so we're not asking for uh highways of range and want to prove on this one. Uh, what we're asking for is that you guys would approve uh non compliant lot size. Under the. I answered with the understanding that this is uh the property that the applicant is in tandem pursuing annexation. These are.
I'm opposed. This is a lot of information. But we don't. That work. Second. Does it need to have a lot for to get it? But it doesn't need to be annexed. We're approving a lot. But I was going to approve with a no bill. That's true. I heard you. So all the structure of the background. Yeah. So I'm trying to. Yeah. Your advice is a little bit. I think I think that may be better. Yes, when you approve the flag, the flag is recorded. The flag can't get unrecorded for stories so that the annexation doesn't take place. So the restriction of the no bill probably makes sense. Or less style. Let's raise the bill this year. We cannot write this. This is going over right that much. Yeah. Yes, yes. I'd be happy. Yeah, I'll I'll amend my motion. But you just said that there's. So yeah. Real motion. We're starting further discussion. Uh, Commissioner Jennings. I want to just. Where did it say on the front?
So they're just on the north side.
Other side. You know, I was on the road. All right. That's right. Actually. That's actually. Okay. Well, the motion is second for approval. With the notation of the no bill. But just that. Other clarification, so. This is the line of city limits. What's the?
Yeah. That right piece also. That piece is not in city. It's just uh maybe the closest piece that's in city limits on the south side of the interstate right away. Is uh Sky Range on the forty acres west of it. But also the the continuity jumps right away.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay. Need further discussion. So let's really take the annex all the way from uh San Amoel to the next seventeen.
So there's land that lies more of the interstate. Um, the airports, uh, all of that is in city limits. So then this is considered contiguous since there's gravity more than the interstate right away. And got continued uh continuity and like it being contiguous jumps right away. So since there's gravity on the north side of the interstate right away, that's considered contiguous state down the south side. So it is. Of course. Well, we shall. Uh, yes. We draw the whole. Vehicle. Yes, you can see this isn't the best part. Everything along the interstate in the mix. Um, and then like George Anderson's property that he has. Uh. The states will eventually know. That's all it's. It's just kind of.
Okay. The motion is second before this is ready for discussion. I'll also pay for the. Say hi. Hi. I'm opposed. I have three. Yeah. I have one more question for you, Josh. So maybe yeah. Okay.
I'd like to take very very seriously you guys. Happy to.
Okay. Um. You may not be aware of it, but north of Sperry. Okay, so sorry, guys. Uh, those credit. You want that service road uh service road west of Sperry. And as soon as you pass. Uh, the last property with homes on the left side. You can be for right when you're starting down into that sway. Okay. I see lots of money. I guess. Pardon. No, 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 no. This is just right outside of Sperry. You said where you go on this. What? Yeah. Be prior to going to the interstate. I see someone that's placing colors down in there. Start with dirt down. And it's on a. Already seen them fly down. Or if you were aware of anyone trying to put this approach. Is it on the uh? On the north side of the service road? Yes. Yeah, that. There was a guy that. Ever. He's requested. You know about it. We talked about it. Um. He sent in an approach permit recently. But he, there was an approach permit. Applied for and granted last year for that property. He wanted to build some storage units in there. Plus, they're not. There's a little something. It's a decent property. The sketch connecting somewhere. So that's just. We did approve. My father, we approved it last year. Um, but. When I talked to him, my recommendation to him was that your your approach is permitted. And it was permitted as a commercial approach. But he needs to get the planning and zoning and you all of getting. Permits with its storage units. Cause I think this got us some storage units up there for that. For that uh billboard. Uh, just something that I would really. Poor place. I'll have to look to make sure it's in the location that we're listening to. Far right in the elbow. It's not for you. No, no, no. Right out of the service. Yeah. It was like a guy that I talked to. I was like, it's not. It just seemed where I'm talking about. The eyes are. It just looks like a horrible place for a. But I'm sure it's still. I have to ask. Yes. So he he just recently applied for this permit. But I looked it up historically. It's already been approved. Very good. So I will go make sure that's in the spot. That was. You'll probably have trouble seeing it. There's no one around. But they placed some color in there. That's that out of the. They next to the interstate. It's our but somewhere it is. It is like a horrible place for for all the buildings. You had to make sure it's where it's two lanes. And then I said, I told him that he needed to get in touch with everybody involved to make sure he could. Yeah, have it so that we want. Okay.
Yeah, we. Then in touch, I didn't even know. After the night. I did find a guy right there. I swear it was too hot. So it was.
Um, fair enough. For me. Yeah. Service road. I know. All right. I'm just. I'm just. Sure.
Yeah, he doesn't have permission. You're sure. You guys did allow access to it. Um, and then he changed the parcel on the opposite side of the interstate. Remember it was split by a portion on this side of the interstate and a portion on the other side. And you guys changed the other side. We were residential. I think he put four houses, maybe or four lots in there. And then this was the remainder, which is the stuff on this side of the interstate. But that's how he brought that house. For a couple of years. So it's a preexisting on record. But if he wants to put commercial usage, I believe at the time the access was only for him to get to the. The. Door side. It's currently there. So that access was just like to get down in there.
Yeah. The site. Distance, I think, is okay. It's just it's just to me look like a really. Maybe it's a tough approach to go in and out of. Okay. Yeah. I'll do some research on it. No. Okay. Well, that's. Right. Thank you.
I think it is in the right location.
Oh, yeah. He might have to go. Either uh. Or it's our stuff.[1439.22]